Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carried.
I'd like to add to the agenda item eight dot one zero, motion to add a resolution for the superintendent nonrenewal.
Second.
Now, this is just a motion to add it to the agenda.
Mrs. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlinger?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Knight?
Yes.
That will then be item eight point ten, now, Mr. Green.
Item eight point ten, correct. Uh, item number five, communications, Amy.
I received two emails, um, one from Mrs. Talone as you do the right thing and renew superintendent's means contract, and another letter, um, from Mrs. McIlroy, um, to support her strong support of Mrs. Payne in renewing her contract as well.
Item number six, uh, this will be public comment on the agenda only.
There's a three-minute time limit, same as we did last time, and I apologize if I have to interrupt anyone like I did last time, but please stick to the three minutes in event that there are a significant number of people like there were last time. And if I do tell you the three minutes is up, please conclude your thought, your current thought at the time, not read the entire rest of the statement.
Hi, so, Christian Janis, CJ Janis of North Hattler, so, I expect the board doesn't appear, so this is for him and everyone else, so. Mr. Redding, it's understood that there's history between your family and Miss Payne, and I ask that you please not allow that to influence other members of the board. Of course, you cannot vote on Helen's contract, but as someone in the leadership, well, you do have influence. I'm not asking you to influence anyone to say yes. I am asking you to ensure there is no influence towards them saying no. Communications to the New Jersey School Board Association in November can be perceived as not having no intent to extend Ms. Payne's contract. If that's true, it's important to consider the optics, since it seems very, it seems pretty typical for a superintendent to have a contract extension prior to the start of the school year in which the enforced contract is set to expire. And it was not how things went with Helen's prior three-year contract, and the optics were less than favorable then, too. This is the time where things can be said to a more positive direction for our community. So I extend Helen's contract because the positives that she brings to the role far outweigh any negatives that happen in America. Plus, the optics of how the Board of Education has treated the superintendent over the past three years does not bode well for attracting top candidates. And that's who we need, a top candidate. Test scores were presented to the Board of Education in October of 2024, there's no cause for concern. These scores and comparisons look good, and when considering the percentage of economically disadvantaged children and military-connected children who can jump from school to school, they look even better. I have a quote from a military family. Military families are stationed at JV MDL from one to six years, two, three years being the most common timeline. Depending on where their children are in their education timeline, they can be in multiple other schools, good or bad. Quote from a military family, "My oldest graduated elementary school at her fifth school in her fifth grade, so attributing her test, her fifth-grade test scores to four eleven with other schools was not accurate. North Hattler faces complex challenge with no other school system New Jersey faces based on percentage size of their military-connected school population." But I don't want to look like, hey, I'm explaining away bad test scores, because that's not the case. Simply providing some information that I've sourced. I have close family, so, sorry. Indeed, there is a distraction that has taken place that take away from the superintendent's important thing here, which is an extension of Ms. Payne's contract for three to five years, and implementing a solid succession plan to help set up the eventual next superintendent. In closing, a quote you may be seeing in the news within the next couple of weeks or months. Military-connected families deal with quite a bit of uncertainty due to the rigors of defending America's freedom and its way of life. Helen Payne is responsible for a level of stability and proven dedication that our military deserves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Michael Abrams, apologies. Thirty-two-year North Hattler resident. I think back when Dr. Carson was around and then he was leaving because it was time for him to go. He created a plan of succession which included Ms. Helen Payne. Thinking back on that time, I was pretty nervous, a lot of us were nervous, who's this Helen Payne person? But when you have a transition person leading who knew the roads really, really well, how to continue to get money coming into this township from Impact Aid and then New Jersey State Aid, eighty-one percent of our school budget is taken care of by third parties effectively. We pay eighteen percent as residents. Now, because of a problem that the Reddings had with Miss Payne, we're going to throw caution to the wind, and if I understand, we are now voting tonight on the non-extension of the contract? Bruce, is that right? I'm just, I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, but I'm just looking for...
That is correct.
That's correct. So, a lot of people that would have been here tonight, had it been on the agenda, are not here because the Vice President added it when you came back from executive session. Is that legally allowed?
Yes.
It is allowed, okay. So you're hoodwinking the township residents by what you're doing, all right? And you're going to snowball and snowdrop all of us here in the township at the eleventh hour and get rid of a high-performing person who adds, is additive to this township and this school and to the kids. I don't give a crap about politics, I care about the kids. That's what I really care about. Just black me when I'm done, when you're, when I hit my three. So, I'm pissed as hell. I, I really am. I was in the North Burntham School District, and this bull crap, I call myself, never occurred, never, never occurred. Why now, guys and ladies? Why? Thank you for making time.
Thank you.
Just to respond briefly to that, and I'm not going to get into responding to everybody, but it did raise a legal question. The board is legally obligated to provide notice by January thirty-first. That I get. No one knew about the, about the vote tonight, Mark.
That's wrong.
That's wrong.
Wrong.
That's my point. Nobody knew about the, the vote going on tonight until the Vice President just announced it. You gotta run off of that, sorry.
Hi, my name's Yvette Kaminsky. I am a fifty-year resident of this town. I went to school here, my children went to school here, I worked here for a good amount of time. What is happening right now in North Hattler Township? First of all, it's heartbreaking over some sort of vendetta that was planned for a very long time. Please tell me you have some sort of plan. I know you're comparing it to Northern, and you say everything's fine, and all of that, and Impact Aid doesn't depend on the person. It does depend on the person. Helen Payne has contacts. She's fighting for our kids every step of the way. I've seen it firsthand. You had better involve this community in your pick because you have voices here. If, in fact, this does go through, I don't know if we can stop it. I hope there's something we can do. Um, but again, moving forward, who's, who's coming? Who wants to be here? Who wants to sit in these meetings with this board? It's heartbreaking, that's all I have to say. Shame on everyone up there, except Nancy, I, thank you. Thank you for being the voice of this town.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandra DePereva, thirty-three-year resident of the town, and my children went through this school system. I haven't been to a school board meeting over the last week for many, many years, and last week I was really appalled when I was here, because when I was going before to school board meetings, I'm, people got up and spoke, teachers got up and spoke for and against things, parents got up and spoke for and against things. Last week, having people so afraid of retaliation that anonymous employee, anonymous town member, that was really upsetting to me for that to go too. And I, I have to agree with the first gentleman, more people would have been here, and as a matter of fact, someone who was going to come but had something else also, I said, oh, don't worry, they're not doing it, it's not on the agenda for tonight. So she didn't come. I feel like what is happening is disgrace, and, and I also felt very surprised that we weren't allowed to ask questions, um, last week. That was also surprising. Will I be able to ask questions on other topics at the end of the meeting? Or are all discussions with the board, do they have to be in writing ahead of time?
It depends. It, it depends. The, the Open Public Me, and I'll pause your time while I talk to that. The Open Public Meetings Act does not provide for public question and answer session. This is the board's meeting that conducts its business that the public gets to come and watch. That's the point of the Open Public Meetings Act. I know, as I said, as a former board member myself, as an elected official in, in a locality, you like to interact with your neighbors and friends and constituents, so that tends to create that back and forth sometimes. But technically, there, there is no back and forth provided for under the Open Public Meetings Act. It's the board's meeting that the community gets to come and watch.
Maybe when this is done, then you can explain how people can communicate with the board and ask questions. I guess at the time at the end, I'll come back on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Porter again, forty-nine-year resident of North Hattler Township. My children went to these schools, my grandchildren went to these schools, and in fact, I have a second grader in school right now. I'm of the understanding that Mrs. Payne was not even given an evaluation last year. So how is it possible to try to get rid of someone that you haven't even evaluated in over a year? I, I'm missing something here? Is, 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 are we just here to, to, for you to decide what's going to happen with a valid employee that's got over twenty-five years of service with one vote? I mean, I know why you were installed. You were installed, Ross, and Mr. Brilinger, Mr. Knighton, to vote Mrs. Payne out of office. We understand that, we know, we can read between the lines. Good luck, boys and girls.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Courtney Samansky. Uh, I've lived here for about ten years now, and I just want to say that our kids are more than a test score. And I think that Helen, uh, really embodies that in the work that she does every day. And Helen is also just more than our superintendent. She's someone who has come to fight for Impact Aid, the military children, and a mentor to countless other superintendents. Many people in leadership roles, not only in our schools or the surrounding communities, but outside our depart, uh, district, dr, sorry, direct community as well, have continued to state how vital she is to, uh, our district, the sending district, as well as other military impacted schools. So I want to ask you, before you go to vote tonight, have you done your job? Have you been able to sit there and evaluate the job that she does? Do you know what she does? And do you know that she does or does not do that well? And if we do have those things in place, the checks and balances, such as that evaluation, then we could say yes or no. But when you're just going off of a last-minute whim to run for board or how your friends or families feel, then those decisions that you have have such an impact on my kids, because remember, my kids are more than a test score, and right now, that's all that I keep hearing. And our kids are more than test scores, and our students are more than just test scores. But this is where we live and where we've come to raise our families, and so I'm asking you all to sit back tonight and think about the decision that you have to make in renewing or non-renewing Mrs. Payne's contract because she is vital to our community and our success. And allowing her to stay for another three years will allow her to set up another superintendent so that we can continue to be just as successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bruce Porter. I'm Bruce Porter, and this is a question on what the gentleman with the suit and tie said. Um, you said that we legally are not supposed to be here anyway. We're here just because they invited us? Yes, no?
No, I didn't say you're legally not supposed to be here. I said, your legal right is to be here to watch the board's meeting. There's no process or mechanism in the Open Public Meetings Act.
That says we can be here?
No, that allows...
That says we have to be here?
No, that's...
I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
I'm saying there's no mechanism that allows for question and answer session. You're allowed to be here and watch the board conduct its business, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so if we can't say anything or do anything, why invite us? If you want to do what you want anyway?
You can say...
Go to a closed session and do what you want anyway. Why invite us? We're used to working with a school board.
Well, the Open Public Meetings Act requires notice and requires public comment.
We work with a school board. You don't have to check your watch, I'm done.
Thank you.
If everyone's done, am I called to come up again?
Sure.
Okay. Well, I actually have something I was going to ask you, a question of the...
Wait, can we just make sure that is, does anyone else want, plan on speaking?
I will.
No, we, we don't donate time to each other, but I want to allow every, everyone who wants to speak to go first, and then you can come up again.
Hope Brilinger in North Hattler Township. I think it's disgraceful and unacceptable that members of this community have resorted to threats and harassment against board members and their families, including my children, and our oldest right here. Saying that people were, I think, and she just said that, that they were installed when my husband was publicly elected. We have a problem with the agenda, I think that's Amy Lerner's responsibility. If you're upset the contract wasn't discussed publicly, I think that's Helen Payne's decision that, you know, she made tonight to have it in closed exec, I guess. Um, it wasn't on there, but I think that the behavior of targeting people and harassing people instead of addressing concerns through proper channels is cowardly, and it undermines the process. Most of you.
Thank you.
Hello, Terry McDonald of Brownsville. I told you last week that I am a former board member for Pemberton for the last twelve years. For the new board members, or actually all board members, being on the board of bed for twelve years has been very stressful. I guarantee you this, where can I let my hair from? My very first superintendent, and I've been through three in my twelve years, told me, if you cannot go home and put your head on that pillow and sleep a sound sleep, clearly you made the wrong decision. And I stood by what that man said to me my entire twelve years. And the reason why he said that to me is after my first year on the board, I made two decisions that just did not sit right with me. And when he told me that, I swore by it and I would stand by it to this day. And if I was ever to get back on the board of bed, I would still stand by what that superintendent said to me. And that was Dr. Michael Gorman. And I will tell you this, you do not know the struggles of losing money because you have not been affected by the S2 cuts like Pemberton has. And remember, I told you, sixteen million dollars Pemberton lost. We hit our taxpayers nine percent every year for the last four years. Hopefully, you never have to go through that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Nelson McGuinness. I'm a thirty-year resident of North Hattler Township. And this is a, uh, agenda which is moving forward based on hate. This person seems to have done a fine job, and now for whatever reason, you want to just throw them out the door. That's nonsense. And a society or an organization built on hate cannot survive. And I want to bring us back to the beginning of this meeting when we said the pledge. The last few words of the pledge are, with liberty and justice for all. It's not just for the people you want, or because they're in your back pocket or doing your bidding, because they're doing the proper job with the best interest of the society in mind. So just bear that in mind. I think this is a bunch of crap what you people are doing. I think you're a bunch of spineless losers for doing it in the fashion you're doing it. And that's just all I have to say.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak before she's given a second chance?
Hey, Lee D'Amato, uh, what you guys are doing is definitely wrong, guys. I mean, look at us, ten percent, our taxes are going to go up from you guys sitting on the board? Come on, taxes are already going to go up. No matter what, that new development, our taxes are going to go up for those kids coming into here. We need funding for those kids in that new development that are going to be coming here. All right, it's very upsetting, um, and I lived here my whole entire life. This is a great place to live. We don't need our taxes to go up. You guys don't even have a plan. If you have a plan, say your plan. Have a plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? This will be your last chance, we're going to let her come one more time. Anyone else want to speak? Okay. Ma'am, you, and then public session will be closed.
I think, I think because it wasn't advertised on the agenda, that the best thing would be to table it, advertise it on the agenda for next month for what they're going to do, but table it for now, to be fair, because you haven't given public notice, which they certainly could have given public notice. If it had been on the agenda, we would have read it, more people would have been here. And as far as for our, and why that's important, people have a chance to speak, is because public participation, board meetings, we have a policy on it, and it says we can ask questions. Last week, we were told we weren't allowed to ask any questions, which, again, that kind of surprised me, but reading this, this is all statements, questions, or inquiries shall be directed to the presiding officer, or any questions or inquiries directed by it. A participant to another board member shall be redirected to the presiding officer, who will determine if such statements, questions, or inquiries shall be addressed by the presiding officer on behalf of the board or by the individual board member. And I, I really do have concerns about this, and, and just, like I said, I really didn't know about all the lawsuits and everything else going on in our town. But I think they need to, they clearly, because if people are so willing to sue our board, uh, what's that to keep Helen from suing, saying, I didn't get an evaluation? Table it for another month, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight, personnel. Motion to approve the following personnel actions, eight dot one through eight dot ten.
One second.
Second.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Knighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Morrow? With the exception of eight dot seven, of course. So you vote no to eight dot seven? Yes. Am I, have I heard right?
You're right, you're correct.
Yep. And I'm not allowed to speak at that. Is that correct?
You can say something, you just can't...
I voted no. I believe that we would be better served if we had a better plan, which allowed us to ask Helen to remain as a mentor to the eventually book that to take her place. So I did present a plan, and that's about all I'm allowed to say, so I said it. Except I said no to that item number eight dot ten. Thank you.
Mr. Greenlinger?
Over to you, back to...
Voting on items...
Eight point one, three point two. Yes.
Motion's carried.
Item nine, instructional. Motion to approve the following instructional items, nine point one, field trips.
Second.
Mr. Knighton? Mrs. Morrow? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlinger?
Yes. Item number ten, financial. Motion to approve the following financial items, ten dot one through ten dot three.
Second.
Mrs. Morrow? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Knighton? Mr. Greenlinger?
Yes. Item number eleven, travel.
Second.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Knighton? Mrs. Morrow? Yes. Mr. Greenlinger?
Yes. Item number twelve, other business. Motion to approve the following other business items, twelve dot one through twelve dot five.
Second.
Mrs. Morrow? Yes. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Knighton?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlinger?
Yes. Item number thirteen, transportation. Motion to approve the following transportation items, thirteen dot one.
Second.
Mr. Knighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Morrow? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Greenlinger?
Yes. Item number fourteen, student, item informational items.
Second.
I think that's my report. So it's a really busy time of year in district. The holidays are behind us, we're back in full supply for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Uh, last week, I attended the NAFIS Board of Directors meeting representing our region, Region One. It's a really busy time for NAFIS also. NAFIS, for those who are new, uh, is the National Association of Federally Impacted Schools. So it's a really busy time there because, uh, we have a new Congress, we have a new president, we have pending a new Secretary of Education. So the NAFIS Board discussed our priorities for Impact Aid as we entered this time period. Uh, we worked hard on our advocacy plan for the hundred and nineteenth Congress. We developed our education strategy for the new Congress and all the new staffers that go along with the new Congress. A lot of reeducation has to be done every time an office turns over. Um, and we scheduled, uh, an outreach next month to brief all of those people and to make certain that the, uh, decision-making and that the leadership offices in Congress are contacted right away so that they know what Impact Aid is and who NAFIS is. And I will be participating in that. We also spent a whole day in strategic planning to ensure... We also spent a full day in strategic planning to ensure that NAFIS as an organization is functioning in a healthy way and bringing strong support for our districts. And then we did all the other business of the quarter. So in terms of Impact Aid, what's ahead, right now, the FY '25 year has the fiscal year for the school district, FY '25 has been operating since July. The fiscal year for the federal government, FY '25, has been operating since October, but there is no federal budget approved yet. So we're either four by their standards or seven by our standards, eight months into the fiscal year without a budget. So that means that Impact Aid can only be paid out at whatever level is authorized through a CR or continuing resolution that you may hear about. And the Department of Ed prioritizes those districts that need cash so badly that they won't be able to make payroll. So we're working on that, making sure that the districts that are in that situation get as much funding as they can as it's released by Congress, and hoping that that situation will be resolved soon and that a full budget will be put in place. In that particular budget, we asked for a $20 million increase to the Impact Aid program. The Senate supported that. There is no House proposal yet, but we're hopeful that we'll get one. And the reason that we're so hopeful that we'll get one is because it's time to start advocating for the FY '26 budget. Don't have '25 yet, but it's time to start for the '26 budget. NAFIS is asking for a $65 million increase in Impact Aid in that budget. And then we're also asking for some increased funding specifically for students with disabilities and construction. And then finally, we are working with a couple of offices to move two priority pieces of legislation that have been introduced in previous Congresses, did not make it to law, but we're looking to have them reintroduced in this Congress. One is the Impact Aid Advancing Towards Full Funding Act, and one is the Impact Aid Infrastructure Act, dealing with fully funding the Impact Aid program so that districts that are prorated get more. And funding an infrastructure bill so that districts that have a large concentration of federally connected students, who are unable to pass a local referendum in order to build schools or renovate schools, so that they can get some funding too. So those two pieces of legislation are in the works. We've had bipartisan support for them in the past, and that's what we're going to continue to pursue. A little closer to home this morning, I testified at the State House in Trenton about federal Impact Aid. The Joint Committee on the Public Schools, a 14-member legislative committee, both the Senate and the Assembly are represented there, and they provide ongoing study of issues that are affecting the public schools. They requested testimony on federal aid that comes into our state. And of course, Impact Aid is one of those types of federal aid, so that's why I was there. They're trying to keep themselves informed so that if there are any cuts at the federal level or if there is any change to the Department of Education, that they are prepared to advocate for New Jersey. Even a little bit closer to home, we had a successful mid-year budget review with our county superintendent. Amy and I were there. I met with the county superintendent, business administrator, special education person, to talk about our finances, both where we are right now and what we're looking ahead to. We're in a very strong position, very stable, so that was good to do. For our staff, we had a full day of professional learning last Friday. The topics ranged from letters, which is language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. It's considered gold standard professional learning in the area of English Language Arts. It teaches teachers the science behind how children learn to read. It's not dependent on any particular program. So we're putting the power in our teachers, not into a textbook manufacturer. Other topics that day were benchmark informative assessments, special education case studies, interventions for essential standards, differentiation in Core 5, which is an individualized system that helps students build bodies, vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension. In very exciting news, last Thursday, we had an onsite visit from the World Language Program staff from the New Jersey Department of Education. This was the last step in a process where we are up for selection as a model district for world languages. Really excited. We hope we're going to cross the finish line on that. The visit went well. Our classrooms, our teachers, and our programs impressed the committee. And the purpose of this program is to highlight and celebrate the great work that's being done around the state in the area of world language education. And it also provides service schools to be designated as a resource center where educators can come to watch exemplary instruction and program practices. So we should find out in February or March if we're selected for that. I'm really grateful for our world language teachers and all that they've put into building our program, all the anxiety that they had about this visit, and for Mrs. Morrow's leadership in this area also. And then upcoming in our district, we have Kindness Week, January 27 through 31. We have a variety of activities planned, displays of kindness, various different special days during that week. We have a multi-language learner family night on January 30 at 6:00 p.m. Our Special Education Parent Advisory Group will meet on February 4 from noon to 1 in the UES Media Center to talk about augmentative and alternative communication devices. And everyone's welcome to that. Sometimes during the day, sometimes at night, so that we can hit different groups of parents and enable everyone to attend at some point. Our pre-pay nutrition night is February 5. That's a lot of fun and you get to eat things. So if you have a pre-pay student, please come out for that. Our UES play is Honk the Musical, February 6 to 7. The curtain goes up at 7:00 p.m. And that's free, so please join us for that. Our Passport Club is up and running, February 3 through May. Our World Culture Festival is February 13. Kindergarten and pre-pay registration open February 20, so please help us spread word about that. And then there is a vote swap being organized by the second graders at the CB Lab. I don't have a date on it yet, though. But I think it's going to happen before the full next board meeting, so I wanted to be sure to mention it tonight. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Item number 15, old business. 16, new business.
I have new business. Okay, I would like to make a motion that this board reschedule, or schedule a meeting for next week, so it will be prior to January 31 deadline, in order to re-discuss the actions taken with respect to Mrs. Payne's contract.
Sorry, folks, I tried.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
Item number 17, public session, public comment.
Good evening. My name is Jodi Talone. I'm only speaking to the men up there. You guys are disgraceful, and your integrity is nothing, especially you, Mr. Padula. Since November, you've been working with the board event president to get MJ SBA in here for a superintendent search. That without having a pink slip, not because of, um, thank you, price notice for Ms. Payne. That is unethical. He should not have been involved in that. You should not have been involved. You should have told him not to be involved in that. So much so that MJ SBA did not know that, was supposed to come last week, ended up not coming because they found out that that was not happening. She did not have her license. That is unacceptable, and you guys are disgrace.
Hi, I'm Julianne Carmichael. I'm a former employee and a township resident. And I actually have a question. I'm not, I'm a little confused over who's allowed to vote on this action because of a lot of conflict of interest. So I'd like you to address how that will be sorted out before this vote happens.
The vote is over.
Okay. Then how, how can this occur when we have such issues with who should be able to take this action?
The board members have been advised.
My name is Wayne Carmichael. I'm a 35-year resident of this town. And I have a question directed at Mr. Brandlinger. His son is employed by Brian Redding's company. I worked for the state of New Jersey for where the Purchase Bureau, and worked in the Department of Treasury. And any area that there will be a conflict of interest, it is in everybody's best interest for a person to abstain so that there is no even view of improprietary action. I mean, bottom line is, his boss could fire him if his father voted a certain way. And I think that should have been taken into consideration during this whole proceeding.
Thank you.
CJ Janis, so I have close family that actually lives in Middletown Township, where they're also represent, their school board. So I've become very familiar with aspects of their board, and actually even up to Berkeley Heights, which maybe some of you have read about online. Social media activity has shown me, oh, I'm sorry. Social media activity has shown me that the also follow-up goes on in Middletown as a board. To quote a friend, and actually a family member that lives in Middletown, that's school age children, one thing I do love about our board is that they do listen to the community. If people show up to meetings, they listen, and they take everyone into consideration. Most families I know of, from all walks of life and political sides, are happy with our board of education. So no matter the reason, it is pretty clear that that doesn't happen here. And we need to get there, and I think this is a good opportunity to start getting there. That's it.
Thank you.
So I would just like to say that I think that for a really long time, both sides of the aisle, regardless of what you believe, past, present, future, have been asking for us to come together as a community, and I think that that's kind of what we've been doing now. And I think that the decision that you guys made today greatly impacts my kids and our kids, but it doesn't impact yours. And so rather than listen to the folks at the community whose children it does impact, you guys made a careless decision. This isn't going to set us up for success. It's not going to set our children up for success, who have to go to school here, who we want to go to school here because it is a good school district. So I beg you, please, let Nancy reopen the voting. Your decision impacts my kids, not yours. We've come together as a community. You're asking for that, and we did just that. We're just on different sides of the aisle, and like CJ said, listen to us, because we are the majority.
Again, my name is Terry Balda. I'm from Brownsville. I am very shocked at this board. You know why I'm not on my board of education anymore? Because I stood by the man I hired. Because that's what a board of education is supposed to do. You're not supposed to have this little hate match that you have going on. If you feel that personal about the nonsense that your board president is bringing, I strongly suggest all yous step off your board, because you are doing no good to this district at all. And Ms. Payne, ma'am, if I did not have a superintendent in place for five years, I would definitely hire you in Pemberton.
I just want everyone to remember something that's been said a lot. It is for the kids.
Good evening. Michael Casey. I'm sure everybody knows who I am. Ms. Payne, I just want to say thank you for your presentation tonight, because at the school board meetings that I've been to, there hasn't really been much discussion about anything or a clarification offered with respect to board members and anything going on in the district. It's basically, as Mr. Padula made it very clear, we're just here to watch you guys make very poor decisions. So in closing, I just want to say, I hope you guys are proud of yourself and enjoy the rest of your term, because it'll be your last.
Please, please sit down.
I realize tonight that the board can add new things to the agenda without public notice, and I guess it's a trend. At last week's meeting, someone had said about in March, they removed a policy, put it up with no notice, you know, added it, rejected. So I went and looked and wondered what the policy was. And all I could tell was there was a number. Didn't even say what the policy was, which was weird. And when I looked at the March meeting, when you talked about a policy, it was name by number, name and number. But this one just had number. And then in the meeting, and it's in April, people were discussing the policy again. But again, that not, nothing for the public to know what the policy was about. And the policy they removed was something for transgender students, which I, the lawyer had said in the second, in the April meeting was, it wasn't a state requirement to have it. That is a policy. So I guess I feel like the board members are adding things maybe to their agenda so that the public doesn't know what's going on. And considering that April, they put some kind of resolution that they were going to have parent transparency, it doesn't seem like this is parent transparency. So I would like to have it put in the minutes that rescinded policy 5756 was for transgender students. And now I would like to know, what did that policy say and why was it removed? Everyone voted for it, so if someone could tell me what the policy said and why it was removed? Is that a question someone's allowed to answer? I mean, I'd like to, well, can they, can they, can I please have a copy of the rescinded policy? Because there were, it might actually be a raise, however, it was listed in, you know, numerically. Some Clemson was a number missing, so I guess those are deleted policies. So I'd like a copy of the deleted policy to see what was removed.
You can send an email requesting that policy.
Okay. And then the other thing I would like to know, are there currently any open or pending litigations against school employees and our board members?
And if so, how many?
There's, there's one pending.
There's one pending, and it's Board of Ed versus who? Or is it a person on our Board of Ed?
It's Angela Redding versus Mrs. Payne, and there's a couple other defendants. Chee Chee F, and someone from the P. Cheeked up and someone's on the case.
The Air Force. The Air Force. I'm assuming. Oh, it's against the United States. Okay. For something like this, and again, how would the pub, you see, it used to be we had local newspapers where you'd see something. How would we know about this? I mean, do we just need to come every month and ask, are we being sued? Are we being sued? I'm ignorant, I don't know. I mean, I was shocked to find out all this stuff going on. I'm sorry.
You can send an offer request for a copy of any complaint involving the district that's supposed to be searched on the federal state courts websites.
So I'd send it to the school board?
Yes, you can send to Ms. Lerner as a record.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kira Janis. I currently go to Northern Burlington Middle School. I used to go to school here. I loved my school here. I loved it so much and to see this happen, I don't like it. To see my own peers here showing support for this, it's not... In Northern, we have a rule, three Rs. Be ready, be respectful, be responsible. Be ready, you do not have a plan ready for you. Be respectful, we are here showing concern. You're not being respectful towards us. And be responsible with the choices you make because clearly you're not. Thank you.
You're not going to renew Mrs. Payne's contract? Do we get a reason? Did she even get an evaluation? Is there any legal reason that you can remove her from the board? Will we ever know or is it just all folly? Is it just because Mr. Redding's wife has a case? Is that the whole deal? Can anybody answer this question for me? Do they dare? Can anybody look at me? Course you can't. Way to go, fellas.
Anyone else wish to make a comment? Anyone else? Last call. Motion to adjourn, item eighteen.
Second.
A second? Who has a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any concerns?